Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us all. We just came out of executive session, so we're just going to start our regular meeting at this point. I'd like to take a moment of silence for Mrs. Frances Dawson, who served as a teacher of the Haldane Elementary School from 1982 through 2001, who passed away in February. So, as I said, welcome. Happy to have such a full house here this evening and hope to get a lot accomplished. With that said, we do have quite the agenda, so we're going to move right into the pre-budget hearings, special presentations, which will, I guess, primarily be driven by Ms. Ann Dineo and Dr. Bowers. And I'm going to try to run technology here tonight.
Okay, welcome, everyone. As President Hammond said, tonight is the pre-budget hearing on the 1819 budget. And it's not a long agenda, but there's a lot in it. So, we're going to talk about budget parameters and go over the highlights of Proposal Two, which is the proposal that we're going to be presenting tonight. We'll look at current enrollment and projected enrollment for next year. I'll go over the numbers in the budget recap and how the numbers close the budget gap that we're experiencing. And then we'll share with everyone Proposition Two and Proposition Three for the vote in May. And just in case you were wondering, Proposition One is the budget, but we don't really name that. It's just always Proposition One. And then just a couple reminders with the library levy. At the beginning of the budget development process, the board shared their development parameters, which this budget does stay within, staying within the tax cap, continuing to reduce appropriated fund balance, continue to fund depleted reserves without leaving educational holes, continue staff development in relationship to our strategic plan, and keeping pace with technology. There are two slides that will highlight the items in Proposal Two, and I'll let Dr. Bowers take over at this point.
Okay, so I imagine that some of you are here because of your interest in the budget, and I know others are here because of their interest in third grade. So, I welcome all of you. I want to talk a little bit about this budget process, which is a little bit different than the ones that we've had in prior years. We have a relatively large gap that we're trying to figure out how to close. And we're just, we started out with something just slightly less than $400,000. And what we've done, both this year and in the years past, is we've tried to go into the budget and figure out how we can make change in a way that's going to work without, number one, and always number one, is the minimal impact on kids, instructionally, social, emotionally, in any way that we can. We've done things from open up new programs, like the academy and bringing kids back to district. We've looked at other places in the budget where we can kind of refine and make change. This year, I can tell you, after each year, we've ended up with a gap, but this one is pretty substantial this year. And so, every year, we've tried to look at something that we can do smarter with the money that we have. And so, we are at the point that a lot of the, and I'll use the term that you, is the low-hanging fruit. A lot of the low-hanging fruit has already been picked. And so, we're looking at different types of ways of making the budget balanced, basically. And, you know, the problem is, nobody wants to lose anything. And I think that that, we understand that. There's nothing in this district right now that we don't want to happen next year. And the first thing you do is you start with a rollover budget, and you figure out, if we were going to do exactly next year what we did this year, what would be the difference in the amount of money we had? When we got our state run for the first time, there's foundation aid, which is the lion's share of the aid, and it's what you get to run schools. We get a very small percentage because we're considered a relatively wealthy district. But it's enough that if there's not much shift, it impacts the district. And this year, between the foundation aid last year and the foundation aid this year, we got $4,000 more. And it's very difficult to balance a budget when the state gives you an additional $4,000 to run a district with all the other things that happen and are required, and the contracts and everything else that goes into play. So, this year, one of the things, and we'll talk more about it, and I'll give you specifics, but this year, one of the things that we looked at are the certification areas of the teachers we presently have. And we looked at, generally, when you hire somebody, you're looking for a specific certification, but it doesn't mean that that teacher won't come in with multiple certifications. And so, if we could look at the certification areas for the teacher, and there was any way of using a teacher in a slightly different way, if there was any ability to move a teacher into a different area that their certification would allow us to do, that's one of the things that we looked at. We also looked at the number of class sections. We looked at what happened in prior years. We looked at any of the areas in any of the, either the B&amp;G Department, or the Transportation Department, or the Food Service Department, was there any ability there? We looked at retirees. We had one teacher retire in January, so that will have a slight impact next year. And we had a couple of people in B&amp;G that retired, but we had a very small number of people retire. So, all of those things went into the budget development process. We've talked to administrators. We've talked to our department leaders. We talked to teachers. And I have to say, I see many of the teachers that we spoke to yesterday here, and I'll get to that in a little bit, but we had, for those people who are here, to talk about the difference between the second grade and the third grade classes. I have to tell you that I had the kindergarten, first, and second grade teachers come to see me yesterday to talk about what we're going to do with third grade. And they all came together, they all sat down, they all shared their experiences, whether they had the students in first, second, or third grade. And they were passionate, and they shared information, and they made some really, really good points. And then they left, and I was thinking, that was very helpful for me. But then it also dawned on me, so give yourselves a pat on the back, that every person that was sitting in my office, the fact that they came up wouldn't benefit any of them. And what they were doing was, they were sharing their experiences, so we could really take a look at what was going to happen to second and to third grade. And they were going to walk away knowing that what they did was in the best interest of the kids. So, I just wanted to say thank you for doing that. So, all of this is happening, and all of these conversations are coming together. And we're looking at, this is a pre-budget meeting, so the budget will not be finalized until the April 20-something, 17th, it's somewhere in that part. We have three more board meetings before, actually, two more board meetings, before we actually finalize the budget. So, this is a pre-budget meeting. We're here to hear your thoughts and to look at different areas. And the only thing that we're, we will ask is, it's a very difficult job, but if you are asking us not to do something that we're presently considering doing, we have to think of something else, because the budget has to balance at the end of the day. And so, there are no easy decisions, and I can tell you that every single situation or everything that I present tonight, there will be people that don't want that to happen. And so, what we have to do is figure out how to make it happen. We try to kind of spread the wealth, so to speak, so there's no one area that's overburdened. And so, when we're talking about things, realize that we have to, if this is a community discussion, this is something that we all have to come together, and we have to come up with the right solution. And if the presentation that we have tonight isn't the right solution, then we have to come up with a different right solution. So, I just ask you to think about that as we move into the budget presentation. And I can tell you, a lot of hours and time and energy and passion went into creating the budget that exists today. We have a balanced budget, but it might not be the balanced budget that the board ultimately approves in April. But we need to come from somewhere. So, it's not an all-or-nothing thing. We can mix and match, we can figure out where it works, but this is something that we want to make sure that, in the best interest of the students, using the limited resources and the different ways that we can work with the budget, we need to come up with a solution. So, we're presenting to you, this is number two, this is the number-two draft of this budget, and we could have multiple other drafts. The other thing is that generally, between now and when they balance the budget for New York State, we keep our fingers crossed that another series of numbers come to us from the governor's office. And when we get our next draft of the funding that comes to Haldane, we will have more money. And I think, Anne, you were saying it was, we had an additional $38,000 last year between the time that we presented and the end, was that what it was? And so, it's not going to be a windfall, but it may be something. And so, that's something that we always consider, and I would, in my experience as a superintendent, I've never seen just one budget run come. And so, there should be more. I think that the more that we do to really support Haldane as the district and the district itself, we can't advocate for ourselves, which always has kind of sounded silly to me, because we can't spend one penny of taxpayer money on advocacy. And so, if advocacy occurs, it has to come from you. So, just a thought.
Can I say one thing before I get started? I have such a vivid memory of being new to this process, so this is, I guess I'm finishing my third year on the board? But I really do remember, and I see so many new places, I just want to articulate that what we're having to do is to start from where we started last year, to just to implement where we were with our program last year, coming into this year with a tiny amount of money we got, the small amount of increase that we got from the state. The district is trying to close a budget gap of $400,000, right? So, the $400,000 has to come from somewhere. And Diana said that, but if I had been sitting here the first time three years ago, I would have totally missed that, so I wanted to just restate it.
Okay, so, we'll talk a little bit about what we tried to do in the budget development process. And we are, you'll hear us kind of, we're going to do some backpedaling in certain areas that we really stressed over the last few years out of necessity. But one of the things, some of the highlights in this budget, is that we continue to want to support the strategic plan. And if, for those of you who may not have been a part of the process, four years ago, we brought the community together, and we spent multiple meetings coming together with kind of this brain trust of people coming together to try to determine what we want for our kids. And we didn't use the kids of today. We said, "We are educating," and if you think about it, we're educating the class of 2030. And we have to prepare the students for 2030. And so, we need to know what we can do in order to create graduates that, when they walk across the stage, are going to have all the skill set necessary. And that's what the focus of the strategic plan is, like, what does that look like? What will we have to do as teachers and educators in order to prepare the students for what they're going to experience at the end? So, the strategic plan really had that focus, and we looked at all aspects. What do we want as far as instruction? What do we want as far as support services? What do we want as far as extracurricular activities? What should our campus look like? All of that came into play in the discussions. So, we continue to want to support the strategic plan. Most of the things that fall under that first bullet, having our new educators train with the New Tech Network, we've sent, this would be the third cohort, where we've sent numbers of teachers to the New Tech Summer Institute this year. And last year was in St. Louis, Missouri, which is not a place you necessarily want to go to, but that's where it is. So, that's one of the things we're looking at. We want to continue to bring training to Haldane, and we're looking at, instead of sending teachers out, bringing support services and staff developers in, we're looking at expanding and continuing to develop offerings that produce 21st century skills. We're looking at, and each year, we bring in a couple of additional co-curricular activities, and they have to exist for a year, and then the second year, they can come in to the contract. We've had a group of people that have asked for some parity with the arts and have asked for an art coordinator, so it's in the budget for this year. We're looking at continuing to have the right technology for our kids. This year, the Chromebooks will be on campus, and we're looking at making sure all of our sixth graders have them. We need, as time goes on and the state mandates increase, the amount of work and reporting that we have to do technologically, and also just to keep the state happy because of its mandates. We are continuously promoting, we're sending information, and we have requirements literally week to week to week. And we're struggling a little bit with making sure that we get it all done with the staffing that we have. And for those of you who understand small schools, everybody wears multiple hats. There's no such thing as one hat. You're wearing many hats, and we're spreading it out, and it's becoming difficult to manage. So, we're looking for some technology assistance to make sure we meet the mandates, and we're looking at the funding for the software that we presently have to increase that and to move on.
Before you go on, could you just explain the club process for everybody? So, how it starts until it gets to be a club-club? And can you also talk about what these clubs are?
Oh, okay. So, we'll go back. So, these, what we do with clubs is if they're, if students have an interest in starting a club, they find an advisor, and the advisor agrees to be the advisor for the first year gratis. And they are willing to work with the kids and see if there's a continued interest in it. And the kids come in, they spend the season or the year together, and then if it really works and it's something that we want to continue, then it goes into the budget itself or it goes into the contract itself. And so, we have had a number of clubs, and these are co-curricular activities. The Arts Club is pretty self-explanatory. You know, we have students that have a real interest. At this point, we do not have an AP Art Club, or AP Arts, so we have students that are creating portfolios in order to get into college, and they can work with the club on that or other areas, if they have an interest in art. Leo Club, Leo is animal advocacy, am I right?
That's Roar.
Oh, that's Roar. Then Leo is, oh, that's the little version of the Lions Club. Okay, thank you. And we have the Elementary School Drama. Last year, we had The Lion King Jr. for the elementary, and this year, we're putting on Aladdin. And so, the person who spends hours and hours and hours working with our elementary students to produce what he's going to produce, that's also a stipended position, so that's what we have.
So, the Elementary School Drama position existed last year.
Yep.
The Arts in the Leo Club did as well?
Yes.
Okay. It did?
Yep.
Okay.
But they existed in their free, yeah, their probationary year.
It was the freebie year.
The freebie year, well, freebie year for us. They were volunteering their time.
Yes.
And the arts coordinator is a new position.
The arts coordinator's a new position, and we don't have one person that kind of is the umbrella for the arts, or somebody, if you needed a go-to person, that was related to some question in the arts. We don't have that person, and that person doesn't exist right now. That person will exist next year. And so, if we have somebody who's interested in kind of helping to coordinate, and it's more of a management kind of coordination thing of lots of things, lots of moving pieces, that's now in the budget.
Is that a stipend position?
Yes. Yep. So, some other highlights of this. We are trying to maintain the summer kindergarten transition program, and if we have students that come in and may not have the same level of experience prior to kindergarten, we try to level the playing field as that, as time goes on. We're talking about maintaining enrichment programs at the elementary and the middle school. We have an athletic trainer that is relatively new to the district. She started just a couple of years ago. In her first year, she did not get benefits. In her second year, she is now being put into the CSEA contract, and she will be receiving benefits. So, that we're working on this year as well. We're kind of looking at library and the way, our library system has changed every year since I've been here. It's kind of been different types of things that we're looking to do, but we're making sure that we have a staffed library, might be a little different than it has in the past. That's one of the areas we're going to be looking at. We're looking at, excuse me, refining special ed services, and we're trying to look at staff members that are dual-certified in something and special education to see if there's any flexibility in the schedules. We are going to be talking about modifying the full-time, FTEs, the full-time equivalents of the special ed services. We are not talking about decreasing any services. Anything that's happening this year will happen next year, it just may be for somebody We have two of our aides that are retiring, and we're hoping to not rehire this year. One of the other things that we're doing in the budget development process is, we're trying very hard not to impact our employees' lives. And sometimes, it's not possible, but we are doing our best not to do that. And so, if we can do something through attrition, that's what we're trying to do. We've had a number of safety meetings with parents, and we've also had meetings with our safety committee, and we've been asked to consider adding an SPO next year. It's not an SRO. It's not a School Resource Officer, it's a School Peace Officer. The SPOs are under the auspices of the Sheriff's Department, Putnam County Sheriff's Department, just like the SROs. The difference between the SRO and the SPO is, the SPO is a retired policeman. And they, like all New York employees that work for the state, once you retire, you can make up to $30,000 a year. And so, if you want to work and you want to do something to keep busy after retirement, you can make up to that point. So, the SPOs actually cost districts $30,000, because that's what the Sheriff's Department pays for. The only thing else that you pay for them is, in the first year, just to get them uniforms and do some training. So, it's far less than an SRO, but the SPO only comes, they can't do as many things as the SRO. The SROs go into classes and they teach, they can direct traffic, there are things that they have under their job description that the SPO does not. So, we do have an SPO in the budget right now. The other thing that we're looking at, and this also came from the discussions that we've had, we, at 2:00, we start to move into the sports and extracurricular activities. What has happened in the past is, if you've come to games, or if you know what happens in the district itself, we open the door that's at the bottom by the cafeteria, because it leads into the gym and locker rooms, and we have people coming and going. One of the things that we're looking at doing is actually putting a security person there. So, after school hours, the building isn't just open, and people will have to sign in and will know who's here and be welcomed into the district during those hours, 2:00 to about 7:00, daily, down in the gymnasium area. If we have evening games, then there will be more time that's there. But so, for safety purposes, we're looking at increasing the monitoring at the entrance down below, 2 to 7, and also the SPO.
Can I just ask, the summer kindergarten transition program, that was kind of like a summer school program, a two-week, was it?
I think it was three weeks. David?
Three weeks.
Why is it Thursday for three weeks?
Three weeks.
Yeah.
And had we talked about possibly maybe partnering with a neighboring district and seeing if that's a possibility, where we could save some money or?
We did have a conversation with Garrison, I think, two years ago, and we were beginning to plan it, so it would be in conjunction with Garrison, and then they just decided to do their own. So, it is possible. You know, it depends on the numbers. You have a limited number of students that you really want in the classes in the summertime, but you want to keep them moving ahead and working in literacy, especially areas during the summertime.
Okay. And, did you have something, Becky?
No, I think I was just going to say that, I think when Dr. Bowers first introduced it, well, first of all, just to give some context, it was in response to the fact that there were more children showing up to kindergarten with fewer skills than we had seen previously. And I think there was also, at the time, we had really also hoped maybe to introduce something, a first-grade summer program to help those kids make the transition. We couldn't afford that. I mean, so that, so the idea of keeping this kindergarten transition program is certainly something, last year, I know we were, not that we don't think that now, but, you know, seemed really very important, making, giving those kids as much opportunity as we could with limited resources to start on a more equal footing with their peers.
And I'm assuming we've already had teacher visits to nursery schools as well as evaluations, and there's still that need?
Yeah, I think there will always be that need.
Okay. And can we just talk special ed? You said something that's really important, that we wouldn't be taking services away from our students. I know CSC meetings haven't fully been in swing. How do we know what those needs?
Well, I think the high school has. Where's Tony? Okay. You finished with the high school annual reviews and you're?
We completed almost all of them.
Okay, and now you're in the middle level and then you're?
Middle level, way behind because of snow days.
Yep. So, this is, and again, this is not fait accompli by any means. You know, we're trying to look at how we can redevelop what we presently have to make it work. You know, special education is one of those things that every year, you have additional funds that are in the budget, because you could potentially have students that have greater, need greater services come into the district. So, there's always some funding waiting for that, we'll take a look at. Right now, we're at the point where, especially in the academy, that we're actually tuitioning students in. We have students tuitioning in from the Beacon School District and the Putnam Valley School District. There's been an interest in having more students tuition in from neighboring districts. We're kind of keeping that at bay, because we have enough of our own students that we want to make sure that we're servicing them to the best of their ability. But in certain areas, like the academy, we can tuition students in, and we have a consortium rate that is, the Putnam Valley, Garrison, and Haldane Schools come together, and we kind of trade off and have less cost if they tuition to us or we tuition to them. So, that will continue. So, those services are all part of this. That's all part of the equation. Okay, so.
Oh, sorry, Diana, one last thing, sorry. So, for people, just to address, I don't think anybody's, I don't, well, to put some more context around the adding the School Peace Officer and the increased entrance monitoring, I'm the board's liaison to the Health and Safety Committee, and not surprisingly, just to let folks know, and I think I've talked to y'all, but, you know, after the most, not the most recent, because we had another today, but after the Stoneman Douglas shooting, there was not, surprisingly, a lot of folks at that Health and Safety Committee meeting, and those parents clearly advocating for an increased response on the part of the district. And so, you know, at the same time, we're... And so, you know, at the same time, we're, you know, at the same time we're needing to cut, there's also a real call from the community to increase some of the services too. And so, and that's where those, those last two things come on. So, there's not like pluses and minuses by all of these things, but, but they all, you know, they're not all minuses. I mean, a number of them are pluses too.
And I think later in the presentation, there'll be some more numbers attached to all of this too, which will also be helpful.
Yeah. And as we said before, anything that's, that goes in, needs, there needs to be a balance there, and it needs to come from somewhere else. Okay, so, these, this is our projected enrollment for next year. We have a small kindergarten group that's moving into first grade. So, next year, our kindergarten group will remain two sections. All other grade level?
Say that again.
Our first grade group?
Yeah.
Sorry. The kindergarten going to first grade, our rising first graders will be two sections. All others will be three sections, with the exception of third grade, which we have four sections.
Do you want to talk a little bit about that process? Because I know that that was a, you know, that was a point of, that was, that's a shift from proposal one to proposal two. Do you want to talk a little bit about that shift from the incoming third grade going from three sections back to, to four sections? Just your, your shift in thinking, or?
Sure. In the past, and I can tell you that when we provide additional kind of support for kids, especially in elementary, it tends to be in kindergarten through second grade. And those are the real foundational years. When students go into third grade, you're hoping that they're very close to grade level, if not on grade level for reading, and they have all the foundational skills that will help them when they get into the next grade. When everything is, is in the perfect world, we generally increase class size in third grade. And so, you may have a smaller grade two class and numbers than you would in third grade. So, because that is more the traditional trajectory of what happens with kids, we were considering doing the same that has been historic here. And then, we started hearing more about some of the, the needs of this specific grade. And it's not a one-size-fits-all anything in education. And so, when we start to think about it, and we start to talk about it, and we start to hear about it, we have to sit back, we have to listen, we have to understand what the needs are, and we have to make sure that we're providing the best situation that we can. So, I can tell you that we've heard quite a bit. We've had a lot of people share their information. You know, we understood that there was some concerns out in the community, and we were hearing what was happening there. As I said, yesterday, we had the K1 and 2 teachers come up. And all of this helps to make decisions. And you know that when it's coming, going into one place, it needs to be balanced in another. And so, right now, we're in that kind of dance of balancing the different things that are out there. But there seems to be a more compelling need this year for our second grade to go into four sections of third grade. And so, that's one of the things that we, we've heard and we understand. And so, that's how the process went. So, did I share enough?
And I just want to add, the board did receive some correspondence, actually some right this evening. And we'd want to thank you all for sharing your thoughts and concerns.
And I'll tell you, it's very, it's very helpful to hear and to have people share their thinking and the understanding, and in a way that's positive and productive and moves us in the right directions. And we're always willing to listen and, and make change, if that's the right thing to do for kids. So, so thank you for doing that. And thank you for being very positive in the process.
It was actually, it's been a great lesson in civic discourse, I think, that these, the second grade parents have really come together and come together over a concern and, you know, mobilized with a very productive, well-thought-out letter, and rallied together and got the fellow second grade parents to sign it, and got the teachers to come together and, and talk about things productively. And I really appreciate that, and I think we all really appreciate that. And it's such a nice, it's kind of refreshing, actually, to have people, instead of, you know, spinning wheels and complaining, but actually being really productive and sharing their thoughts in a constructive way, and, and therefore affecting change. It's really refreshing.
So, it's probably one of the easier arguments than we've been able to come to a positive conclusion. So, right now, looking at the, the dollar values that we are considering, we, I explained in the beginning, the rollover budget is basically what we have this year and having the exact same thing next year. So, looking at the rollover budget of being a little over $24 million, and we have the proposed revenue for the 18, 19 school year, it left us with a gap of $385,000.
Can I just say, from anybody that's been following, from proposal one, we saw at the last meeting, the gap is really $166,000, right?
Yes. That was, well, this is where we started out. And then, so, then you start moving in, and you start thinking of different things that we can?
No, no, that's, wait, no, because what? The gap is 385, 129. And after proposal one, which had differences, had like the three sections, it was a different draft, it was kind of, and it was only like a half draft, because we still had $166 to make up.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So, that's kind of been scratched. And proposal two is once again, looking at the 385.
Yep.
Right?
So, going into the budget and looking at many different areas that we could pull from, the first thing we did is, we were trying to figure out where to get the funding for the SPO. So, we went into our staff development lines, and we looked at staff developers that we've had this year and last year in the Golden Soar and Rutherford, and we think we're going to take a break from that staff development this year. We're also going to, we're going to, most probably, you know, depending on when, when this becomes the budget, we're going to be asking for the new tech network to come here this summer instead of sending people out. And so, that will help us generate the revenue that will be then turned into the new SPO. We have two students that we are presently placed, have been placed out in different, outside of the district placements, that will be, one is going to be returning. He will be coming back into and will be attending the academy next year. And another student is, a home, is now will be on home instruction. So, the money that we are returning into the budget because of these two students returning, and this is, will be, will be about $160,000. So, these are high-cost placements. We talked about the aides position. We have two aides retiring, and we're through attrition. We're hoping to be able to work it, so we, we don't have to replace those positions. One of the things we're considering is, the district is required to have a .5 library media specialist for the district. We're looking at that potential moving from a 1.0 to a .5, and then filling in from different areas. And so, that's also under discussion. We're looking at special education teacher positions, and so, where that number would be the equivalent of two full-time equivalents. But we're also, as you see later on, we're also pulling from, as I said before, within the teaching staff, to use certified special educators in different positions. So, we're actually not only going to be looking at how people who are certified teach certain special education classes, we also have one of our TOSA's, which is Teacher on Assignment, which is, they are doing something other than their certification area. And we're going to be returning part of a TOSA back into special ed. So, it's, it's people that are, even though it looks like the positions are going, we have people that are moving into them from the teachers. What we're looking for next year to add, as I said before, the SPO and increased security at the entrance. We're including an arts coordinator. We're including technology assistance. We're looking at software costs, just to have the softwares that we presently have. It's just the costs that are going up, and we're, the benefits for our athletic trainer. And those are the kinds of ins and outs that we're looking at.
The technology assistance is what you referred to before, requiring in addition to the CIO's job? This is in addition to?
That would be in addition to. And we're doing things, through the last couple of years, we've been looking at doing some, some assessments for our kids that we can watch, and we can watch them grow, formative assessments that allow us to understand, you know, whether or not a student grows a year's growth in a year's time, how much, what the growth is in a six-month period, a one-month, a one-month period, a one-year period. We can kind of mix and match where we're looking for. But we, we have the NWEA, which is a way of assessing student growth for our kids K-12. It's part of our APPR, and that's computer-based. So, we have things like the NWEA that's coming in, that adds to the, the need for that type of position. And then, we have different state mandates that are coming in. And we've been kind of piecemealing it together. We do, we do have BOSI services outside the district that help support. We're looking at, when all is said and done, if we can decrease some of those, and that may offset part of the cost or all of the cost. So, those things are still under discussion. But we know that we do need some more support there.
And I actually am just going to reframe how you talked about the NWEA just a little bit.
Sure.
Just because it's something that Julie Stifson and I had talked about years ago. So, NWA, no doubt about it, is a periodic assessment. The, we do use it as part of our APPR. The, the use of the NWA as, as a periodic assessment was something that administrators and teachers wanted, because unlike state assessments, which come once a year, are designed to be really more about sort of checking on how schools are doing, and, and those results come late in the year, NWEA is really designed to be administered periodically, provide immediate results to teachers that they can then use to inform their instruction. So, what Diana said wasn't wrong, but there's some words in there that I think people can, I wanted to expand upon a bit. I, the, the, the NWA is used widely across the country, especially in efforts for multi-tiered systems of support, to make sure our kids who, that our kids are on track, are on track, and our kids who are struggling, making sure that they're informed and getting the services that they need. So, it's a good expenditure.
And I'm just going to go back to the special ed teacher positions. You said that was two full-time equivalents, but it's not really two full-time equivalents. Can you just clarify?
So, what we're looking at is, well, first of all, the TOSA, and I think if we go to the next, oh, no, we're not there. Okay, so that doesn't have it. Okay, so, the, there is, the TOSA that we presently have, we're looking at returning a .4 special educator into the, back into the special ed department. So, that would bring it to 1.6. We have, we have teachers that have either just recently received their certification that can move into positions at the high school in the science area, that will free up special educators that are presently teaching as ICT teachers in that area. We'll have a, we'll have two science-certified teachers with one with special ed certification. That's something that we're looking at. We're looking at the way that we use our ICT teachers in elementary. And in some grades, we have one teacher servicing two grades as an ICT teacher. In other classes, we have one teacher, we have one teacher, or two teachers that are teaching in just one classroom or one grade. And so, we're looking at if there's flexibility there. And so, all of, right now, what we're presenting, at this point, there is no decrease in service. There is no decrease of something that presently exists this year, existing next year. We're looking at doing it smarter. If we find out when all the annual reviews, when they're all done, said and done, if we need more teachers, we're going to have to figure out how to get it. And so, at this point, we're, we're looking at the process. We believe that we have a picture that exists right now that is solid. If we need to increase the numbers, we will. And so, we're trying to base what we have here on the students we have in front of us. And so, and we're also trying to base the services and the special ed services based on who we have employed in the district. But there will not be a situation where something that exists this year does not exist next year.
It's not time for public comment yet.
Okay. So, we are also asking, and we do this on an annual basis, we try to keep one new bus coming into the fleet, so we have buses that are running well. And if you do any research, if that's something you're interested in on buses, you know, the older they get, the more expensive it is to maintain them. So, you actually, you need to keep a fresh fleet in order to make, not to have money pits. So, it'll be funded through a bond anticipation note, a band, and then it goes into, which will, will help pay for them. And the way that Ann does her magic, there will be no payment to the 1920 school budget. Do you want to talk a little bit about the capital fund?
Sure. Proposition three is to reestablish the capital reserve. The Capital Reserve Fund, which its, its legal name is Facilities Improvement Reserve Fund, was established in 2008, and that was for a 10-year term with a maximum amount of $1 million. We have money in our reserve fund right now, but it expires this year. So, in order to maintain the ability to have a capital reserve fund and to keep money in it for use, whether it be toward a bigger bond referendum or smaller projects as we go along, if you recall last year, to have the library renovated and to have the bleachers, we used $100,000 of the capital reserve fund, and there was no impact to the budget, and there was no impact to the tax rate, because we had this reserve fund. It needs to be reestablished for another 10 years, so that we can continue to benefit from it. And that has to be a separate proposition, and it would have to pass. Otherwise, we would not have the ability to have this kind of savings account for capital projects. And we would, it worked just fine. Over the term of the 10 years, $1 million was plenty. And we would, we're asking to reestablish this fund with Proposition Three.
Hey, just some other things that are good to know. One is that through the years, we've been able to replenish our reserves, and we feel at this point that our reserves are at a healthy level. So, that's a very positive thing. We continue to get very high ratings from the comptroller, and financially, we are very stable. And so, that's been happened, that's, we've been receiving the highest rating for a number of years. And any operation surplus or increase in revenue over what is necessary to implement the proposals will be considered to reduce the appropriated fund balance. And so, all of that goes into what happens now, what kind of money we have at the end of the year, where we're going to place the money, what kind of funds or reserves we're placing it in, and how we're going to use the dollar value that we have at the end of the year. And I'll let you do the library levy.
Okay, it's just a reminder to everyone that the library levy, which the proposition was passed in May of 2015, doesn't go away. That will be on your tax bill annually. It's separate from your school tax and the tax levy limit. It's an additional percentage that's added to everyone's tax bill, so that the- It's an additional percentage that's added to everyone's tax bill so that the total comes to $73,150. And we collect for the library, and we turn those funds over to them. Because they don't issue their own tax bill, another jurisdiction has to collect taxes for them. And we agreed to do that, the voters agreed to do that in 2015, and that will just remain the same until it's, you know, maybe they come back for more someday. I don't know. It's the only time that we've ever done it, though, in this, in the district.
And should we also say that the bond referendum that we've been discussing as the board, that's still under discussion, would be separate from the budget, although it may be on the budget ballot, maybe on the same ballot as the budget, but it's still under discussion. So the steam piping, the, the window sills, all that that we've been talking about, is that correct?
Not for this May. It's, it's too late.
It would probably be tough to.
Oh, I see. Okay. The timeline, where the advertising requirements that we have to fulfill, because, because you're approving the, the propositions tonight, it, it would be too late. It would have to be a separate one. But you can have that, if it's in the proper timeline, it doesn't have to be in May. We've had them at other times of the year separately.
And if you're interested, we have John D'Angelo here, who is our architect. And for those of you who have been kind of following along, we've been talking about the pipes and the needs for, the need to potentially putting a new piping system to deliver heat throughout the building. And we had, we just finished another analysis, and so John is here, and he's going to share with us what the, what he as an architect and the companies that we hired found when they went into the walls and took a look at, at what we need. So that will be shared as well.
Thank you. Although there's no public comment specifically on the agenda at this point, if the board is in agreement, I think we should open the floor to public comment.
Yeah.
So, there's anybody who'd like to, if you can just come up to the mic, it's primarily for the folks at home.
Thank you very much for working on all this, and I, I feel like I've learned a lot about the school board budget here tonight. I wanted to say thank you for considering the four sections for next year for the third grade. I know it's something that we were all very concerned about, and I just want to thank you guys for listening to what the teachers thought and what the parents thought. I think you guys made the right decision. And I wanted to submit the letter. We have 70 signatures from parents asking you to do that, but it sounds like you guys have already agreed to do it. So, thank you. That's it. Who should I give this to?
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Just so you know, that copy of that letter will be sent to, do we get, do we, will we get a copy?
I actually know it already to the board.
We were in executive session, but it's been emailed to.
Oh, okay.
Is it up to you that this one has all the signatures on it?
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any additional comments at the moment? Go ahead.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Hi, thank you guys for your work on the budget. It's got to be hard. I had a question in terms of the special education positions and kind of the reshuffling. Are then the cost savings there that you will be, in a sense, letting current special education teachers go in order to find other teachers in the districts that have that extra certification? That wasn't clear to me that you're, in terms of the numbers and what's being saved there.
So right now, if we look at just the positions, we are probably, it's going to be a shift of about 1.6 full-time equivalents.
So 1.6 teachers will be let go?
Well, yes, and, yes and no, because we have one that's a part-time teacher, the .6 teacher. We are still looking at, we still have the open high school position. So that is, that's all part of the same situation. So we do, we, at this point, there may be a shift of, of one person. But we haven't, that has not been finalized at this point.
Okay. And is the board also looking more closely at where teachers are dual certified? Because I know that with certification, you can be certified as a special education teacher, but not really have practice in the classroom, working with students, because you simply completed your certification and then you went into general education. I mean, that's true for, for all fields. And I just want the board to think a little bit about doing these kinds of shifts in that regard, because sometimes for specific students, a more experienced teacher really does make all the difference.
And we, we understand that.
Okay. And then I have one other question about the .5 FTE library media position, meaning that that's the middle school librarian position?
It's for this library we have, but there, there was a 1.0 librarian now, and we are, we want to continue to meet the state mandates, but that's an area that we're considering. And again, you know, I'll, I'll share, I'll, I'll just remind people that it's subject to change, all of this is. And so this is a preliminary budget hearing, which is for you to hear what we're thinking at this point, and we'll see where that goes.
Okay. All right. So that's, so in other words, there will still be a librarian in the middle school and a librarian in the elementary school?
Correct. There's somebody in the library. We do have a teaching assistant in the.
No, no, I, I do realize that, but I mean, I was just confused with that piece of it.
There will be, there will be people in there.
Yeah, and so Dr. Bauer, you had mentioned that the, the current middle school, high school librarian is a full-time position. Decreasing that position potentially to a .5 position, but that doesn't mean that there's not going to be somebody in the library full-time.
Correct.
You'd be perhaps pulling somebody from a different position, and, and instead of making that person halftime somewhere and halftime in the library. So the library would still be serviced on a, as a, with a full-time position, just split between two people potentially.
Okay. Meaning that the current full-time librarian will be let go? I, I, I don't mean to say it in that way. I just mean that, that what is confusing, I think, for some of us in the audience is understanding the, the shifting around of things and how that in reality plays out.
All we can talk about right now are the positions that we're presenting in the, in the budget itself, and we, we really can't talk.
Okay, okay. No, but thank you, because that, obviously, when those of us who aren't privy to everything, you are, look at that, it starts to raise those questions.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So I was one of the parents that was here when we interviewed for the SRO for the first time. And in the conversation, in the hiring process, there was a portion of the salary was paid by Putnam County. In terms of the peace officer, you quote $30,000, is any portion of that being paid by Putnam County?
No.
No. Is there any funding available for the district or from the county to be able to support this demand? I mean, I'm sure we're not the only school district that is considering an increase in support, whether the peace officer might be the right person, or adding mental health support staff at the building level with someone who's experienced in working with kids, a part-time person who can support that team. A school as, as small or as big as ours definitely can afford the use of, of, of another mental health person, whether it's a social worker or a psychologist. And I'm just trying to figure out if the safety committee considered the social emotional needs of the kids in addition to the safety, whether the peace officer would be the best resource to support teachers on the classroom and kids on a, on a, on a day-to-day basis, or is the peace officer, since they're not doing what the SRO does, which, thank you very much, I know the SRO has had a tremendous impact in supporting our social emotional learning in the district, concerned that we're bringing another person into the building that doesn't have the experience of working with children to be able to be the peace officer, what that entails in terms of, of that person's role in our community and educating our kids. I remember we talked a lot at length about the role of the SRO, how they're going to introduce, you know, their weapon and, you know, person armed in the building. And we did, as, as a committee, you know, spent a lot of time asking those questions. And I sort of feel like this is coming up, and I don't know if we've considered the social emotional needs of kids at the classroom level, and I don't know if teachers have, I, I don't know the impact it has. And I'd like to know if that's something that you're exploring, because I know in the field, what benefits our kids and our teachers is the access to a person who has the experience of working with kids at different levels to address their individual social emotional needs in addition to our special ed kids.
So at the beginning of the question, I think you were asking, is there any funds? And we've been hearing rumblings about the potential of some funding coming into districts to support either an SPO or an SRO, but we haven't heard anything definitive. So we agree. Part of the equation with all of this is mental health. And one of the things that we've been doing is we've been looking at how we can provide additional mental health services for the community in this area. We have, through the, the, the Phillips Town CTC, the Communities of the Care Coalition, we have built relationships with Cove Care in Putnam County, and they provide the mental health services for Putnam County. And we've been advocating for having services on this side of the county. And we are, we are, we are the farthest from the ability and, and for some of our families to get to Carmel. And so Cove Care is going to be providing a licensed clinical social worker for us here next year. And right now, we're looking at, I think that we're talking about three full days, two part days. They will be servicing, we're talking about having the individual come and be housed here. From 10 o'clock to, till the end of the school day, they can service students in the building. And then from 2 o'clock to about 6 o'clock, or 3 o'clock to about 6 o'clock, they would be available to meet with families and do family therapy, and they would be paid through insurance or Medicaid or the other ways in which they collect funds from Putnam County. So Tony Shoa and I met with the Cove Care people actually yesterday. And so they have to apply to have a clinic here. And so they're going to begin the paperwork, and it takes two or three months. So it's pretty doubtful we're going to start before next year. But it's something, they have heard the need for services on this side of the county. They are very anxious to get that to happen. And so we will have the ability of, of a clinical licensed social worker to be here to support our kids without the cost to the district. So yes, we've considered both. And we're trying to figure out how to do all of it in a way that we can afford and that's going to service our students.
Okay. I have another question related to your professional development piece and the strategic plan of the district. I was one of the parents, I was part of the think tank that helped develop the, the strategic plan. And one of the things that we talked about at length in all of our committees was the continuation of support, professional development, to ensure that we're not just building the soft skills for kids and addressing the 21st century skills and the learning needs and the project-based learning part. But I've, in my conversations with both the middle school and the elementary school administrators, and in my time here as a district, as a parent, I'm not the only one that feels that our teachers need more professional development in the areas of reading and writing, more specifically in writing. I feel, and there are many other parents who share the same concern, and I, for years, I've grappled as a taxpayer, the amount of money that we pay to send teachers, you know, to other states to do professional development during the summer. And I'd like to know how many of our staff have gone and benefited from this training? Is it consistently the same number of teachers going? Have we really gotten our bank for our buck here? And in addition to that, I still see many kids and, and parents who have concerns about the lack of explicit writing instruction once our kids enter a testing grade, like third grade. And for homework, some kids are getting photocopies of old state assessments. I am concerned that we're not really putting our money to build those skills and to build our teachers' capacity to address those other skills that we asked for at the strategic plan. And I, I'm just concerned that we're not, as taxpayers, given a good insight into how much professional development our teachers are getting to really address those skills. Because regardless of where they go, and then I see the impact of the, you know, .5 FTE library media person, the whole core of our strategic plan to build collaborative learning, you know, collaborative learning community solely depends on a person who's here to man the, the place, who knows instruction, who can facilitate, you know, student learning in small groups, be able to be that resource to carry over the skills that are being taught and addressed in the classroom. And I'm concerned that kids who are not getting that explicit instruction in the classroom are now going to rely on somebody, on a TA, no offense to our, our teaching assistants, because they know they're great. But I'm afraid that we're missing the opportunity to build and generalize skill outside of the classroom when we are just satisfying the state mandate with a .5 person and not putting a qualified person to do research with our kids outside of the classroom. As a classroom teacher myself, I relied heavily on my librarian and media specialist to be able to carry the work that I was doing beyond my classroom. And it was ensured quality, it was ensured that it met the standard, and I, I'm afraid that just to comply with the state mandate, we're going to sacrifice the ability of our kids and our teachers to continue the good work that they do in the classroom because we don't have the money. So I would love for the board to consider, you know, an, an increase in the professional development piece and strategically address the weak areas of our curriculum, which as an educator myself could tell you that my child wouldn't be able to write an essay to the standard according to the state based on what she's currently doing in the classroom. And that's a big concern of mine, because I can take care of it as a parent, but not everybody has that access. And I think that we're failing our kids when we're trying to cut portions of our, of our learning in professional development in a .5 FTE without really looking at the long-term impact of our kids, are our kids ready to really enter the workforce? So I, I really urge you to consider that, because I know that there are lots of parents who have concerns, who have kids beyond second grade who are concerned about the quality of the work the kids are expected to complete with the rich learning environment that they're living in. What they're experiencing in the classroom does not match what they're producing on their own.
Thank you.
Is there another time for public comment, or should I jump up once more?
Well, there is at the end.
Okay. One last, a far. Okay. There's always.
Too much to say. I just wanted to speak briefly to the school peace officer portion of the budget, which I had forgotten, because there were all those other pieces, and they're all interrelated. So I completely understand, Dr. Bowers, when you're talking about balancing and shifting and how you're going to have to pull from one place to another in order to fund other things. And I feel like that's something that we as parents do, that we're constantly balancing for our students, and you're like the, the parents of the district, right, having to play that balancing game. I'm a little bit concerned about when the budget's this tight, putting that much additional money towards a school peace officer at this point. And I only say that because as a parent, I find that I struggle to push against sometimes what can be a reaction to things. And I just want to ask you, is holding truly any less safe than it was last year or the year before last year? Or are we right now, as parents, and I say that in a very collective and warm way, all the parents in this room, you all as parents or grandparents or community members, or are we feeling the reaction to yet another incident that has happened at another school? And I would err on the side of giving our students those educational opportunities, not cutting if at all possible teaching positions, especially even if it's just one special education position. It's really hard to find really great qualified special education teachers, and I would hate to lose someone who has been working in the district with a population of students, whoever that person may or may not be. This is not the final budget, I realize that too. But I would hate to see that removed for the benefit of something which may or may not improve actual safety at the school, but may be simply assuaging our perception right now of what that safety needs to be. And I don't say that lightly, because obviously, as a parent, we're constantly walking that balance. Do I let my kid climb the tree and have that wonderful experience? Or do I say, no, 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 don't do that, because you might fall and hurt yourself? And maybe that's a bad example, but, but it feels a little bit like we're striving for some level of balance, and I just really don't want us as a community, when we have this kind of a super tight budget, to be reactionary at this particular point. Because if things hadn't had. Because if things hadn't happened, would we be looking at this position? Would we be this concerned about adding this into our budget right now? Or would we be looking at other things? So, just throwing that idea out there. Thank you.
I second that, wholeheartedly. And I'm, it's just interesting, if, looking at the numbers, half of the additions are the SPO and the enhanced entrance security. And I just asked the board if there's maybe an alternative way to reduce that number. I largely think that, you know, obviously, mental health, and I would hate to see a teacher lose his job for a reaction to anything, although I think we all agree that safety's important. But I think there might be other ways to potentially solve this problem and look at it as a big picture.
Thank you.
Mark Robohn.
I'm sorry.
Robohn, R-O-B-O-H-N.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add my voice, not, I'm not speaking as the HFA president, but speaking as a special ed teacher, a special ed teacher who takes great pride in my craft. And I would like to add my voice of concern in regards to the shifting of special ed teaching assignments. When, when you talk about the services not being lost, that's obviously very, very important. But equally important is the quality of the services. And that, I think, is what should be at the very, very top of the list, not just having a body in that place that can deliver that service, but somebody who has devoted their life and their career to the specialized services that we, special ed teachers, provide to our kids. And I'm incredibly concerned about what will happen to the quality of services if this plan goes through. That's all I have to say. That's all I have to say about that.
Can I just say, just as far as the way it's coming across the chain, I think that might be me, is it me? So, from my perspective, I don't think, I think what Dr. Bowers is saying, and I'm seeing a lot of it as a high school principal myself, you know, there's two components to the special ed. I mean, you have amazing special ed teachers that know their craft, and just, you don't want to just get a license, now, poof, you're magic, you know, you're a special ed teacher. But there's the other end, is you're a special ed teacher, and then you're put into a content that you may not be familiar with. So, by putting two content teachers, and that's what we're looking, you're taking teachers that have the content specialty, you give them the special ed component. So, there's something to it. And I don't want to get into the whole thing, because I'm not saying that it goes back and forth. So, it's not a matter of, I don't want this to be construed as some type of taking away, diminishing the special ed teacher. Quite frankly, if you ask me, as an educator, I think 10 years from now, I mean, I think all teachers should be dual certified before they even become teachers. And I think that's where education is going with education programs, is all teachers should be graduating with a license in chemistry and special ed. So, there is definitely something to that, especially when you get into the middle and the high school. Because, you know, as a teacher and as an administrator, knowing the content is so important. I mean, you might be able to have the skills, be able to teach those special ed skills, but the content knowledge is so important, and there definitely is a balance to having dual certified teachers that can do that, so.
But there's also something that you also have to keep in mind, and that's called state mandates, and we have to meet state mandates.
No, no, no.
Yeah, no, but you don't necessarily, right now, the state mandate is not calling for a dual special ed teacher. So, we have to stick with where we're at now, is what I'm trying to get at.
Again, I think, I want to make sure I'm making the right, we're not, we're not, we're putting, the teachers are dual certified, so that it's not a matter of, you are in this, if you put a dual certified teacher in there, you are making the state mandate. So, nobody is saying to circumvent state mandates in any way. But what this does, and it also, at the end of the line, imagine if you had, every teacher had dual certification, how much flexibility you would have with programming. So, it really, it really makes it, it's better for the students, it's better for programming, for the schools. So, I mean, it is a good direction to go, but not to, you know, again, I'm not saying to, I don't know, you know, as far as, it's not a negative on the current teachers, and I don't think that's the direction. So, I think somehow it's being construed as, you know, getting rid of special ed teachers and putting in content teachers, and that's not where we're going with that.
I think I'd say two more things. I mean, I haven't been privy to all of the conversations that have gone on among the administrators, but, you know, I want to go back. So, one of the things I think that Dr. Bowers has done enormously successfully, that a lot of people wouldn't have known unless they were paying attention to budget seasons every year, is all the ways in which she and Ms. Dineo have found efficiency upon efficiency. It's what's kept us able to move forward and stay within the budget cap for years. And while I haven't been privy to the conversations among the administrators, including Dr. Shoa, including the principals, what I am confident of, as a board member who's been listening to this process and been in conversations with folks over the past couple of weeks, is these decisions are not being made lightly, they are being made with incredible attention to maintaining the level of service. I think, I think, you know, bringing Dr. Shoa on is an example of it. I think the district has recognized where we needed to improve the services that we offered, not just kids with IEPs, but kids who needed support. And the one thing I really don't want people to walk away from this meeting, seeing those numbers, thinking that the district is backing away from this commitment, because the district is not backing away from this commitment. This is a very difficult year, and I am going to put my trust in the administrative, the administrative team and Dr. Bowers to know that they are doing this as carefully as they can, recognizing the need to continue to meet students' needs. It's not, you know, and again, it's, we need to hear from people, I'm actually very happy to hear some of the things that I've heard tonight, this kind of feedback is really important. But I think it would be very easy to walk away from looking at those slides and making a particular, and I understand the concern and the recognition of good special ed teachers, and I'll wrap up what I'm saying, but I think it would be a mistaken interpretation of the presentation tonight to think that the district is backing away from its commitment to educating all children. I think this is another example of how Dr. Bowers has worked really hard with Ann and the administrators to find efficiencies that none of us want to have to implement, but we have a crappy system with how much money we can raise taxes. And that's the way it is.
I do realize after that, I mean, I do know how much, I come to most of the budget meetings, I don't know why, I don't particularly enjoy this time of year, but I show up, and I'm a high school, I'm the high school department chair for English. And I've been in this district, I think this is my 16th year, and I'll try, and I'm starting to be long-winded, I apologize. When I got here, we had a full-time librarian and a fully certified education, sorry, elementary ed teacher in the elementary school library. And that made our library program work. And every time that there's a budget crisis, our library program gets hit. And I was so relieved this year, knowing that we had a qualified and certified librarian, that I was like, okay, next year, I'm going to be able to start to harness her capabilities to help the high school students. I've not felt justified in asking her for her help, because we give them an untenable position. And we have a tendency to do that at our district, because we have to, because we're trying to meet all the needs. But being a K-12 facilitator of anything, you guys know, because you guys are wearing many hats, my, our administrative team, this is a good place to work, and we have, but sometimes we're asked to do the impossible. And cutting the library position down to .5, to me, sounds like the impossible, and it just, it broke my heart, and I know that I might be asking for a miracle for this not to happen, but just taking more steps back, it's hurting, it's hurting our humanities program. And I just need to say that. Thank you.
My name is Laura Sheehub Eldon. I just wanted to sort of reinforce what Cory and Mark mentioned about just hoping that our collective anxiety and worry is not choosing, causing the district to focus on items that may or may not be contributing concretely to actually creating a safer environment on campus. I should have said, from the beginning, that I know how hard the administrators and the teachers at our school have been working to build an amazing education, and I've seen that, and I've seen it by attending different committee meetings, and I just would hate for those, those really crucial programs to be cut. So, and I think that those kinds of programs are, have a preventative role when it comes to, you know, mental health and wellness, and the feeling of well-being and safety and community on our campus. So, that's just one point. Is it possible to ask for the screen to come back?
I think it died.
It died. Okay, so I can, that's okay, I can, I think I can refer to what I was, just had a couple questions on. I was just curious about, so that was on the safety, sort of security expenditures coming forward, which is $60,000.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Thanks. So then, there's also, I saw arts coordinator, and I, sorry, excuse me, thank you.
I saw arts coordinator, and I was heartened, because that's one of those types of programs that have, you know, the arts programs at our school, anyone who might have watched this weekend's high school play can see how amazing the high school drama program is, and how much they do with very little, actually. They've transformed a gym and an auditorium into an amazing theater and theatrical experience, and I'm sure that's very, I just, you can just feel how important that is, not only to the high school student participants, but the elementary students and the middle school participants, but also the audience and the community members who get to experience that and see role models on stage and so forth. So, they do, they do that with a lot of volunteer work and a lot of community volunteers. So, I see the arts coordinator, that's a $1,000, $1,600 line item, where the school peace officer and enhanced entrance security are $30,000 and $30,000. And then I also just came down to technology assistance is another $30,000 line item, and software costs are another $17,000. I guess I'm just concerned, I don't really understand what the technology assistance means, like, I would like to ask what, just for, if there's possibility for a brief explanation as to what that means, as well as the software costs. And I understand we have software costs and technology costs, and we have to, we live in a technological world, but I just, I would love to see more expenditure on things like the arts programs in our school, support for so many of these programs that do contribute to a whole child and can have an impact on all the skills that we want our children to have as they grow from the younger elementary grades up through middle school and high school. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm seeing how the technology in the classroom is contributing to that. And I'm curious, I just want some, you know, better understanding of it. I'm not, you know, I think if it were explained to me better, like, why we have to spend $30,000 on more tech assistance for next year at the expense of potentially, you know, keeping a librarian, potentially, I know this is not sad. How come? Can't we spend $15,000 on tech assistance? Don't we all, you know, don't, we have access at our libraries in our community to tech? Anyways.
Dr. Bowers, can you, do you want to give some information about technology assistance? You know, it's kind of a broad word, it can mean a lot of different things, do you want to be more specific?
And actually, I think what you're thinking of and what we're thinking of are two different things, you know, and I would, I would be much happier if I was recommending technology assistance that was actually going to go directly to the students. But unfortunately, what we're doing is just trying to meet the mandates and the reporting regulations and the requirements of some of the new changes at state ed over the last few years. And it's a lot of work, and we don't have the staffing to do it. And so, we are, we found ourselves this year really struggling to get things done. And so, we're kind of looking at how we can divide it up with all the people that we have in the administrative team this year, and we physically just don't have the people to do that. I think the majority of things that we are going to be using this person for, there's nothing educational about it. It's all mandates and reporting and the things that we're required to do. And I think they, you know, we have a, we have a very limited team of administrators, and some of us are more technologically challenged than others. And so, as much as we would like to do more with that, it's just not feasible with the, right now, with the structure of our administrative team. So, we need someone with expertise, we need someone that's going to help us. We have, we had Julia that was a CIO last year, Tony is our CIO this year. I don't know, would either of you like to share anything about that, to help clarify? And then, CIO, chief information officer for the district.
I would just simply state that some of the data pieces that we're talking about would include things like NWEA and moving large amounts of data in and out of different systems. I would also say, just security systems alone, like, that's data management, the nurse's office is data management, the cafeteria systems are all data management. All of these things now are done electronically, and it's quite a bit of manpower, and we don't have a big tech department. We have one teacher on special assignment who's helping and working through as much as she can to help us in bringing infrastructure and different things like that up to par, but there is definitely a hole in the district as it relates to data management.
I would just add that, as Ms. Sniffin was alluding to, being under par, I would say it's more like behind the curve, that technology in schools, the demands of technology in schools, not just in terms of what we use in the classroom, but what we use to run a school district, has advanced so much, and we've tried so hard to run to catch up. But the workload has just been shared piecemeal over the years, because we, I guess, always perennially find ourselves in the situation where we're trying to manage a budget and trying to be fiscally responsible. And people like Sniffin and myself, taking on that responsibility in addition to what we already do have, is usually just sort of managing and to get past the curve, or get ahead of the curve, and actually really start to be able to use data in a meaningful way and run the district more effectively in terms of the systems that we do have, and having them coordinate is a very difficult process. And so, this is sort of a hump that we have to get over, which is a need, I imagine, that's been going on for some time, and is just getting more and more pressing with every year that passes.
And actually, the beginning of the conversation, the administrative team came in and sat down and went through the process, and they requested a full-time person. And, you know, with knowing what was on the horizon and what was happening, we understood the request, and we understood why it happened, but it just wasn't going to happen this year. And so, we scaled it back, we're, this is like the minimum of what we need in order to make things run smoothly. So, but there's nothing great about it, there's nothing that's going to necessarily support our kids in a way that our kids in a way that we would like to, but it's a mandate, it's a requirement.
And just to add, that's something you hear a lot, you'll, you'll hear it as like an advocacy rally, no more unfunded mandates. This is what we're talking about. The state requires schools to do a lot of different things, but they don't give you any funding to do it. So, it's then up to the schools to figure out how to pay for it. And you've already got a whole bunch of things to pay for. So, that's a constant challenge.
I just wanted to follow up.
Laura, if you wouldn't mind going up just so people can hear what your question is.
So, can you describe the arts, did you already describe the arts coordinator position? Did I miss it? So, then I can just catch up. That's fine.
I just wanted to follow up, this is Kevin McRory. You know, with the peace officer, I do believe it's reactionary, I agree with the other parents that said that. And it seems like the two positions, couldn't there be somebody, isn't there overlap right there for a security to have maybe the peace officer, that retired police officer maybe be the security? And that could really eliminate one of those two positions?
Yeah.
And then on top of that, I would say that there's not just police officers that are state-retired, you know, people. Like, my sister was a librarian, she worked for 35 years and now she is a adjunct professor. But I'm sure that you could look at some of the librarians that have retired and maybe bring them in to, you know, to work in the library. And, you know, think outside of not just bringing, you know, police officers in here that retired, there's other state employees that could come in as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, if anybody's watched any of the board meetings, you will hear that some of what's been said has echoed what I have said in the past. I think it's really important for us to keep in mind that this is a diverse community and people have really different opinions about these kinds of things. And that's all I'm going to say, that it's, that, and where do we want to go with this? I would say not a place where we are all really unhappy with each other. This is where I would vote, that would be my vote. Not that anyone wants that, but yeah. It's, it, my point is it's a hard, it, it, it is a, this has the potential to be a very tricky issue for this community. And so, that, and that's, that's okay for it to be a tricky issue, but for all of what we're hearing tonight and other meetings, I have heard the opposite. Yeah.
Hi, my name's Eileen Anderson. I am a retired New York City police officer, I'm a community, community member, and I've been a Haldane School employee for the past 13 years. So, yes, you can have a retired police officer who has experience for children. We have, what, about 850 kids on campus and you have one person protecting that 850 kids plus employees and staff and teachers. So, $30,000 doesn't seem that much if you really look at it that way. And we could be Sandy Hook. Okay, you could just pick up Haldane and put it in Connecticut, that could be us. So, do we really want to quibble about $30,000 to keep 900 people safe? I don't think so. Thank you.
So, when I received the email, Christopher came, my son said if there's any possibility of his wonderful teachers being cut, he needs to come to the meeting and speak. My son has benefited from your special ed program and I cannot thank you enough. We had Mrs. Quick, we had Mr. Paparo, who he adores, Mrs. Gilbert, Mrs. Chi currently. So, we need to thank you because you have a wonderful staff, but we need to support the staff because once they feel like they're losing their support, they may start looking to find a school closer to their home. And I don't support any cuts in the special ed program. Now, I'm an art history major and I have a dance school for 33 years. And I love the arts. And Christopher came home and he said, "The librarian played her cello and it was beautiful." And even the kids who weren't interested in it became interested because she played so beautifully. I support the arts too, but I do, unfortunately, they have to prioritize. And there is a correlation between children with special needs who don't get the attention, who end up becoming the children who commit those crimes. So, there's a correlation there. We need to support our special ed program. Sandy Hook, not Sandy Hook, there, it is Sandy Hook who has a program, Begin by Saying Hello. There are ways without spending money where we can teach good manners, kindness, reaching out to our fellow students without spending the extra money. And I'm not saying I don't support the additional officer, I'm just saying there are ways we can bring arts and safety into our school and make it the happiest, safest place around. We have to teach our kids that they have the power to make that change, to create that environment. And it doesn't always, the answer isn't money, the answer is that we set the example. And I know a lot of kids may not have the support at home, but most kids who talk about people who've influenced their lives, it's their teachers, it's other adults, they usually don't state their mother and father. You know, so as an educator, as a person who loves education, believes in the power of it, I just, I strongly urge that we not cut special ed. We, we moved here for your school. We were, actually have had our home here for 14 years, but we're living elsewhere. And we did our research and we were told that this school does not support children with needs. My son, they thought he was autistic at the age of two, he's come a long way. And a lot of that is thanks to your school and your teachers. Let's support all our wonderful teachers. Mr. Paparo is an excellent role model for my son. Mrs. Quick, Mrs. Muller, Mrs. Chi, all, we need to support our good teachers because they will leave. And we can bring arts and safety into this school and we don't necessarily have to spend a lot of money for that. I would volunteer my time, so maybe we need to tap into the free resources of parents. My son is a scout and I went to a scout meeting and I said to my husband, "If he were getting paid, he wouldn't have done such an excellent job." Most of our, the parents love their kids. I know Cory's done amazing work at the school, volunteered her time. You have a lot of very well-educated, wonderful people who if you were to ask them, "What can you give to our kids?", they would do it for free. I would volunteer my time. I'm, you know, putting together art, dance, gardening, everything. We can create programs for them without spending money. I'm sorry, I need to take him home. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to assume there are no additional comments. If there are, please come up now. Okay. So, we're going to move on into our superintendent report. Perhaps we should invite, we should speak about the pipe study so that Mr. D'Angelo...
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. So, as we said before, as we were looking into the, the needs of the district, especially related to the pipe study, we actually asked our architect to help us get another opinion and a more recent study of what we have happening within the district. So, Jim was able to coordinate, John D'Angelo was able to coordinate a, really a lengthy study that we now have, and so he's here to, to share it with us.
Sorry, Tony, you're going to need to sign back in.
Right, you want me to just stick to the piping study?
Oh, no, whatever you have that is important for us to know.
Actually, I didn't too.
That's fine. Okay.
For anybody who's new to board meetings, it's not rude to leave if you feel, if you feel like what you've come for is completed.
You're welcome.
It is also fine to stay. We do not take it personally. No, not you.
Not you, you have to stay because you have reports. But thank you for coming.
We need your feedback on the, on the steam pipe survey.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Well, you know how to clear a room. Off they go. Yeah, they're all getting ready to get up in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. Hey, John, it's all yours.
Now that you have a limited audience.
No problem. Good evening, my name is John D'Angelo, Fuller and D'Angelo Architects. We've been working probably for the last six months with the administration, with the facilities committee, looking at various aspects and putting together a future bond and really right now working on a wish list on items that we'd like to include. And I'll go through, we've, we've conducted two separate reports, one on, on the piping that, that we've talked about, just a brief history. The original building was constructed in 1928. It's heated with a steam boiler, generates steam, and there's piping throughout the building that brings that steam to all the devices, the radiators in the room and the devices that provide the ventilation. And, and that, as, as that steam cools, it condenses back to water and then there's a piping system that brings that condensed water back to the boiler system and that cycle continues. You can scroll, just what I was planning to put together on the PowerPoint tonight is the piping evaluation and study, which we've done. We've also gone through with our mechanical, electrical engineers and looked at the existing systems throughout the building and put, starting to put together a report analyzing those systems and then what would be then carried over into the capital projects list on where we are and the items that we're looking at now with the, with the board, the administration and the facilities committee. And then working on what our next steps would be. So, I'll start with the piping evaluation and report. As I said, the building was originally constructed in 1928. All those steam piping throughout the building and all the distribution are original to the building. So, they're 90 years old now, you have 90-year-old piping. So, the big question was, are we going to have problems in the future? Over the last few years, there have been instances where pipes have failed, there've been steam leaks in the building and it's caused either some internal damage or where, where heating had to be shut down and, and problems within the building. So, as part of our analysis, we've reviewed previous known pipe failures. Then right now, we've conducted visual inspections on all the piping that we can see within the rooms, within the pipe tunnels, within the boiler rooms. And then what we've looked at, we've been able to get samples of a couple of pipes that have failed and then take those back to the lab. We've worked with Robert Hoffman, who's a materials engineer, a metallurgist, who've evaluated that pipes and he's put together a report on the condition of the pipes that we've been able to at least do some sampling on. This was a summary of the, the reports, working with the facilities department on, back to 2005. They've been able to give a history of the, the pipes that have failed, their locations and the types of pipe is either a steam supply line or if it was in that condensate return piping. All the piping where leaks have occurred has been within the 1930, 1928 building structure. So, in the last 15 years where we've been able to, to analyze it, or the last 12 years, there've been 12 pipe leaks. We've really looked at them to try to see if there was a pattern, if there were certain areas that were prone to leaking, if there, if there was something that might be contributing to, to the problems. And they've been pretty spread out, the areas, most of it have been in the lower, lower floors, either in the basement crawl spaces or within the lower floor rooms. A couple of them were within the, the toilet rooms at the middle school and at the elementary We've done visual inspections, it's tough to see in, in the pictures, but throughout the boiler rooms, most of the piping is covered with the boiler rooms. We've, where we could, we've removed some of the insulation to check out, to look at most of the, the piping. A lot of the piping in the boiler room is new, the boilers were replaced 2010, I believe, 2011. So, they're relatively new. Most of the piping in the boiler room, at least the main supply piping to the boilers was new and replaced during that boiler replacement project. All the distribution from the boiler room is all original piping from 1928. These are some pictures of some of the existing pipes where it was exposed, where we could get access to them. And most of the visual inspections, what we can see from the outside of the pipes, the pipes were in relatively good condition. We really saw no major problems on the visual inspections from the outside of the pipes. We saw, tried to get a, a look at pipes where they go into the floor and these are a lot of the conditions around in the hallways or in the classrooms where the pipes enter the floor. And a lot of the piping is within the walls, within the, the flooring where, where we can't see it. But a, a problem where there's usually, or an area where there's usually problems is where that pipe goes into the floor where there could be moisture there or some of the stripping compounds used on the floor waxing processes sometimes causes exterior corrosion at those points. And we really didn't find any bad problems at, at those points there. We were able to get two samples of pipings that, where, where it did fail. Where facilities department did do some pipe replacements, they had saved the pipes that failed and we were able to take these back to the lab and we, we analyzed these, these two pipes. Next. Both the analysis, if you can go back, the analysis were looking at the exterior of the pipe, both in its original condition and then doing a media blast on it to remove any of the surface rust and scaling to really see the condition of the metal. We were also then, we're able to cut, do a section, cut the pipe in half where we can look at the interior of the pipe, the thickness of the metal, where the corrosion really occurred. And then again, did a media blasting on, on the sectioned pipe to really see the interior. On all the analysis and at least in these two sections, it's, it's evident that all the corrosion were, really attacked the pipe from the exterior of the pipe. In this one condition, you can see where the failure is close to the elbow. And that the, it really eroded from the exterior of the pipe till, ate away at the pipe till the pipe wall became so thin it, it actually failed. As we move further away from that elbow, you can see when we got about eight to 10 inches away from that elbow, the material thickness was the, the full thickness of the original pipe. And then the, the interior, internal surface of the pipe was relatively clean and, and in, in good condition. So, it, it was apparent that this pipe had failed from external corrosion, probably a water leak from the exterior wall, got into the pipe insulation, it sat in that isolated location, kept that pipe warm and eventually failed at that location. So, I think the summary is that, the visual inspection from the exterior of the pipe appeared in good condition, everything that we've been, we were able to see. The failures that we were able to analyze were caused by outside corrosion and that we saw no evidence of any chronic failures or any failures throughout the system that would really lead us to recommend an immediate pipe replacement. I mean, there's nothing that we saw... I mean, there's nothing that we saw that saw endemic problems throughout the system. Looks like most of the problems and the failures that have occurred have been isolated, probably caused by corrosion from outside the system. The pipes that we were able to open up, to look at, really showed that the interior of the pipes were still in good condition. I do have to say, we are dealing with 90-year-old pipes. We only were able to do those destructive tests in a couple of locations and a lot of the pipe is still buried in the wall. So even though what we saw looked okay, just we, yeah. And there's nothing to say next week, there might be some other issues. As part of the report, we might, he recommended possibly doing some more destructive testing. I think after the heating season, if we ever get out of the season, we might be able to work with Facilities to open up some of the pipes, do some additional testing to maybe feel a little more confident that the piping system, give more definitive reports on the condition overall. I mean, this report and the destructive tests were really in just those two locations. So it's not definitive throughout the system. So I think if we do some additional testing, we might be able to look at and give a more, I think, as we move ahead, be feeling more confident that at least, short-term or, I don't know how long-term we could really discuss on 90-year-old pipes, but that short-term, we can move ahead and look at upgrading systems or doing other things and not, maybe not really talk about repiping the whole system. That still should be an item on the table. There are still a lot of benefits in doing the repiping and conversion of the existing steam system. Just a history, the building right now is served by two different systems. The steam system, the boilers create steam. They send the steam to the devices in the 1928 building and in the elementary, 1979 wing is also steam. The 1964 wing, which includes the cafeteria, gymnasium, music rooms, is a hot water system. So the steam is made by the central boiler plant, it goes to a heat exchanger. It creates a loop that heats the hot water for that soon. So there's a lot of inefficiencies in the steam system, a lot of inefficiencies in the two separate systems. The control of the heating, the comfort levels within the room are harder to control with the steam system. You can get much better and quicker reaction in a hot water system where we can pump water directly to those devices, stop and adjust the flow to regulate the temperature much better in a hot water system. That's one of the problems now with overheating mostly on the steam side, especially in an older masonry building where you've got much less heat loss and then a much lighter 1964 addition, which has much more heat loss, much more ventilation occurring down there with the larger spaces, cafeteria and gymnasium. So trying to regulate the steam system to provide enough heat for the hot water system causes a lot of overheating on the steam side if it's not well-regulated. And there's a lot more maintenance on the steam system. There are traps within the steam system which prevent steam from coming back to the boiler. It lets the steam stand, say at the hot side as it condenses. It allows the water to pass through and to go back to the boiler. Those steam traps clog, they're a constant maintenance item. As they clog, they allow steam to go back to the boiler, which causes problems in the condensate return system and problems with the boiler when you have live steam going back to the boiler room. So there's still a lot of advantages to converting to the hot water system throughout. And as, I think as equipment is starting to be replaced, I think it's more and more going to be converted to hot water. The other report we did, we did go through the building with our mechanical and electrical engineers. They've done a thorough study. I'll go through quickly some of their findings and the summaries and not get too much into the detail. But again, we conducted visual inspections, looking at the existing mechanical, electrical systems, the devices and the systems throughout the building. We, as part of that analysis, we reviewed the possibility of removing the steam components from the system and converting the existing steam system to a hot water system. We also analyzed the potential for adding air conditioning to major spaces within the room, within the buildings and within the school site. And then recommendations and for other needed upgrades that we saw as we did our evaluations. So looking at some key recommendations, and I won't get into the specifics on them, but some of the key recommendations within the report, one of them was replacing the domestic hot water system. That's the system that creates the hot water for the sinks and the kitchen. Right now, in the boiler room, there are four domestic hot water tanks, very similar to a residential-type tank, vertical tank with a burner at the base. They're all oil-fired burners. Of the four tanks that are in the boiler room now, two of them are already failed and are disconnected from the system. So there's really only two tanks that are operational at this time. One of them is dedicated to the kitchen and one of them is dedicated to, one of them provides hot water to all the sinks and the other hot water devices throughout the building. So those are in need of replacement and those are something that is definitely going to have to be addressed in the next, in the next couple of years. They do have a limited service life and they are definitely reaching the end of theirs. Another, sorry. Another item definitely needs to be looked at is replacing the boiler feed pumps. They provide water makeup back to the boilers and they are original 1970s and definitely reaching the end of their life. The other recommendations were, have to do with the steam conversion into hot water. So if we do go in that direction, the engineers' recommendations are to change over, eliminating the steam and changing over to hot water for the reasons that I've outlined. The next, looking at the ventilation systems and their key requirements. A major item that has to be addressed is ventilation to the lower music room. That room at one point had a unit ventilator, similar to the unit ventilator here, providing ventilation within the space. At some time, it must have failed, it was removed from the room. It was replaced with a cabinet heater to provide heat within the room, but there's no mechanism within that device to allow fresh air ventilation. So right now, that room has no, essentially no ventilation other than operable windows. Replacing the ventilation system in the library, in this space. It has a unit ventilator, which, multiple units throughout the room, which provide ventilation air, but there's no air conditioning within those units. Supplement units were added. These wall-mounted split systems connected to condensers on the roof, they provide cooling, but they don't provide any fresh air. These are currently inoperable. The small window unit was added. If you've ever been here, when it's on, you really can't do anything within the room when that's running and it provides limited cooling throughout the space. Even these two don't do anything for the far end of the room. So the system here really needs to be replaced. Another, you know, problem with the system here, you have a system bringing in unconditioned, in the middle of the summer, 90-degree air, 90% humidity, and then these units trying to cool them. You have the potential for working against each other and also creating condensation issues within the room. So this space, if we wanted to add air conditioning, add a central system with fresh air, with even distribution, and upgrade this system. Providing air conditioning and ventilation to the main office and the nurses' office. Right now, there are a couple of window units that provide air conditioning in that space. No provisions within those space for bringing in outside fresh air and there are small exhaust systems, but that's the only ventilation right now, an exhaust system and the windows. So the recommendation is to provide air conditioning and ventilation to those spaces. Replace the ventilation units in the auditorium. They were added in the 2005 bond when the high school was constructed. They were added into the space. They have the capability of providing cooling and air conditioning. There's no capability for providing any heating within those units. So they can only be run in the warm months to provide cooling within that space. In the winter months, there's no ventilation within the auditorium other than the windows and the exhaust system. The original ventilation system is, was abandoned years ago and that system is currently not functioning. So the recommendation is to replace the ventilation system within the auditorium with a full central system, providing air conditioning and ventilation throughout the space. Replace the cafeteria HV unit, in addition to that, providing air conditioning. That unit has reached the end of its useful life, it's operating sporadically and there was a request to then add air conditioning to the cafeteria. So the recommendation is to replace that unit and add air conditioning to that space. We also looked at the electrical systems. The electrical system was upgraded in 2005 as part of that bond. When they added the elevator, they added a new electric service. It's a 900 KVA service. There is excess capacity within that. We did look at peak usage in the building at the electric utility bills. So they did plan for future upgrades. We do have the capacity within that system to add additional air conditioning loads and then also adding additional plug loads and additional distribution in the classrooms within that existing service. If we did upgrade or did want to add major air conditioning upgrades throughout the building, say air conditioning to gymnasium or adding air conditioning to every classroom, then I don't think we would have the capacity and we would have to look at electric service upgrades, meaning service connections to the utility, upgrades to the transformer and all the switch gear within that room. So there is excess capacity, we can add additional outlets. One of the recommendations is adding additional outlets and electrical distribution in the classrooms. And then adding recommendations on our walkthrough, additional emergency lighting throughout. It's the lighting that comes on in the event of a power failure. They are located sporadically around the building. There is, we don't think it meets current codes and there should be some upgrades and additional lighting provided, to provide the additional lighting in the event of a power failure to, just to provide a safer egress path. Recommendation in the report too, is to replace the fire alarm system. There are different vintages of the system that have been added and kind of spliced together. You have the original devices from the 1979 wing. It looks like this, devices within this building were upgraded at some point. We really couldn't pinpoint the vintage, it seemed newer than the 1980. The system currently doesn't meet ADA requirements for visual notifications. Strobe throughout the corridors, the public use spaces and has limited detection capabilities. The system has been added to so much that trying to add those capabilities or upgrade the system now, we don't think that's going to really be feasible. So the recommendation is to replace the entire system with a new addressable system, meeting current codes and upgrading those device notifications. Now, we've been working with the Facilities Committee and there is, I guess, we'll call it a wish list now on this capital project list and I can go through that quickly now. Just the things that we're looking at and starting to look with the Facilities Committee. We're starting to then develop budgets and put some costs to these items now to really see and what kind of order of magnitude will be on moving forward to a potential bond. Looking at the interior projects within the main building, replacing the window shades, installing suspended ceilings in the 1934 building. Most of the classrooms within this space had original plaster ceilings. There've been some acoustic tiles glued onto those. The intent is to add a suspended ceiling, tile ceiling, similar to the ceilings here and then upgrade the lighting within those rooms for more, more energy efficient and more comfortable lighting within the rooms. Replace the cafeteria flooring. Replace ceiling tiles within the Merritt Mabel Building that some of them have tested positive for asbestos, so those have to be addressed relatively soon. Paint the auditorium and then replace a section of flooring at the lower level at the elevator. Moving on to the exterior, there's been discussion to replace some of the windows in the 1979 wing and the exterior doors. There've been some problems with the emergency escape windows and the limited operability of those windows. So there's been discussions to replace the windows, increase to some more energy efficient windows in the process. Install some guardrails along Craig Side Drive, coming down from the upper parking down to the lower parking. Was one of the recommendations. Repave the bell lot, repave the cafeteria lot and pave the cafeteria gravel area and walks and then to provide paving on where the student parking, that was expanded and is a gravel area now. Those are some of the items we're looking at. I've touched on some of these items in the HVAC list, but you convert the 1934 and 79 wings to hot water. Replace all pneumatic controls with digital. Right now, all the older systems are controlled with a pneumatic control system. There's a compressor within the boiler room, it sends compressed air and controls some of the operational valves. That system's compromised. Some of the newer systems are controlled with a digital control system and building management system. So the upgrade would convert all the old pneumatic systems to all digital. Any new equipment we put in now would all be digitally controlled. And that will be managed from a central building management system and it could, there'll be energy savings obviously with that where you can program in start and stop times, occupancy times and reduce energy costs in the unoccupied modes. Install ventilation system to the lower band room. Install the HVA system in the main office and the nurses' office. Install an HVA system in the high school, middle school library. Replace the system in the auditorium and then to place the domestic hot water heaters. Looking at the electrical list, all the items we touched on, adding additional electrical outlets in the classroom. Right now, most of the classrooms in the original 1934 wing have just two outlets in the room. So there's extension cords that teachers have tried to expand throughout the room. It does create in some cases a dangerous situation where they extend them too far or under carpets. So it really does need to be looked at. And with the added devices moving out into the classroom, it definitely needs to be upgraded. Replacing the fire alarm system we touched on and then again, adding emergency and exit lighting. And then upgrading the electric service if there are some major expansion. And then upgrading the electric service if there are some major expansions in the desire to air condition the building. So the next step is refining this budget, or refining this work scope list and this wish list. And we're putting some budget numbers to that now. I should be able to share that with the board in the next few days to see where we are and where the starting point is, and no one's going to be happy. And then, really, I think the next step is then really discussing a goal for a bond timeline and really working to that goal, and determining the steps required to meet the target goal of a bond vote, and then, obviously, getting to that point.
Great. Thank you. It's much appreciated.
Okay.
Much appreciated, yeah. No, I mean, this was something, this was really some pretty definitive answers to a lot of the questions, a lot of the questions that we had, and, you know, some of the things that we thought were bigger issues, maybe still are a big issue, but not as big as we thought, but then this comprehensive review raised, you know, many other issues that were maybe not on, that were not on our list, and it's, you know, it's more, as far as I can tell, it's more complicated than we thought it was, and I thought it was pretty complicated to begin with, but this is super helpful. It's a long report, but very thorough, and the information that we needed.
It really made me think about the long-term implications of how much the electricity is going to cost. Like, that's going to be a huge difference if we start going with all this air conditioning and all those things.
Air conditioning is definitely going to increase.
That's going to change numbers, big numbers, long-term.
Yes.
So I have just a basic question, which I don't know if you'd be willing to even give an answer to. If we were to do everything, address everything on that list, what do you think that bond would look like?
He's going to get us that number shortly.
Roughly. Are you getting us a number?
Yes.
Okay.
But not today.
Not tonight.
Not a guesstimate, huh?
I can throw out.
Yeah, we'll go with the hard numbers. That's better.
Well, also, we don't want to just see to have, that's a lot, that's a lot of stuff. I mean, it's a lot, it's a lot of stuff, and I think one number has, personally, I think it has limited usefulness, because we need to sort of understand all the different components as well.
May or may not want to do all of those things.
That's exactly my point.
Right. I think that's the problem, the number will get thrown out and not, no context.
As you said, some of those things were wish list items. I happen to be a member of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, so I have worked with John many times, and we do have this thing called a Needs and Wants List, and that's something.
I think there's going to be a lot of prioritization in the next few months, and really looking, taking closer look, and looking at the budget numbers and see where the scope really should be, and really refining that number.
Great.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Here's your slide back.
Yeah, I think we should let the administrators.
And May, May first.
And May. May first.
Please, May, when you're done, this has been a very long lecture. And although we're expecting more snow, we're assuming there's going to be school tomorrow, so you may.
Fingers crossed.
Well, first of all, the Howden Drama Club had their performance of Les Mis this weekend, and it was a really big success. I saw it, and everybody did amazing, and there was a huge turnout each night, so that was really good to see. Also, last week, many in the high school and a number of kids in the middle school as well participated in the National Student Walkout, which I thought was very successful. It was peaceful. We all returned to class at 10:17, so I thought that went really well. And then, kind of following off of that, the Women Empowered Club, which I and Freya Wood Gallagher helped run, we wrote letters to our local representatives on gun control and school safety. And then tomorrow, pending snow, there's supposed to be the student faculty basketball game. I believe the weather rescheduling date is April 5th, if that doesn't work out. And once again, a lot of students are getting their college acceptance letters, this time for regular decisions that are early decision, but that's also really exciting.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Mr. Ballick.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and it's actually nice to see a few teachers and staff members and parents still here, because usually it's very lonely when we're here in the evenings. Because it's late, just going to share one quick item that was on my printed report for this month. Last week, our first graders went to the Phillips Town Food Pantry to drop off their donations that they had collected. Usually, when you make a donation, you don't understand the process, where it goes, exactly what happens, especially hard for six-year-olds to understand that. Well, our food pantry is located in a nearby house of worship, and the children were able to walk there with their teachers, and were able to drop off the food themselves, and understand that there are people right in our community who are in need and that they can do something to help them. It's a great way for our children to learn about empathy and how to help others, and I thought it was a wonderful learning experience, and it just works so beautifully because the food pantry happens to be walking distance. We weren't going to arrange for a bus or anything like that to take them, but it was a handful of blocks away, and I didn't share any photos with you, but I saw some great pictures that the teachers shared with me after they got back, and their kids had a fun time, but also a great learning experience, too. So I just wanted to share that, and we're going to keep it brief this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Silke.
Good evening, everyone. You have my board report, but there's just one thing I want to highlight off of there, and then two things that aren't on there. May, not May, April 5th will be a presentation, a screening of wonder at the Butterfield, which was set up through the hard work of the parents of our MSEC Committee and the PTA. And another PTA event is going to be on April 13th, Friday, April 13th, will be the Middle School Activities Night, featuring karaoke. So that's another thing to place on the calendar. And I just also wanted to give you an update that the skate park design project is still ongoing, so as we were meeting here tonight, Ms. Hartford and Ms. Gessen and the eighth graders that are working on that, we're meeting with the Board of Recreation as well. So I'll keep you posted as that proceeds. Thank you.
Thank you. We have 10 minutes on this tape, just pay attention.
Just very quickly, in addition to what May said, Putnam County every year has their Youth Bureau Awards Night. This is their 33rd annual one. They award 16 students across Putnam County as youth leadership, with youth leadership awards, and they select one teacher or staff member amongst the entire county. This year, the teacher-staff is from Howden. Kristin Paparo is the youth leadership award winner for our county. So I just want to recognize her, but I would be remiss to not recognize Nicole Mitchell is one of the 16 students also recognized within Putnam County. So congratulations to both of them. The dinner is April 13th. Nicole will be in New Orleans. I will be in Washington, DC. Mr. Paparo and Mrs. Paparo will be attending.
Thank you. Dr. Shoa.
So I just wanted to highlight something from my report. In the spirit of fiscal responsibility, another responsibility of my department is to serve students who are enrolled in non-public schools within our local education agency, and we do have one non-public school in our LEA. The CSE is responsible for any student who enrolls in that school regardless of, from where they matriculated from, their home public school district, although we do bill back for services to their home public school district. So in the spirit of partnership, we have begun to work with the director and teachers of that school to develop pre-referral interventions, of which they already do have, but they don't have the same structure of support personnel that we do. So we've been sharing resources, guidance with them to help them better serve their students in school than refer them for special education services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Shoa, maybe this is a question for Dr. Bowers, but you presented the board with a, like a chart of the mental health services that we currently have, which was really helpful. I feel like I have more questions about that as well, though, like, you know, I would love to know what each of these people do, like, what's the difference between the social worker and the guidance counselor, and who do they service, and are they only servicing kids in crisis, or are just like regular kids who just want to talk? And, you know, I feel like I'd love a little bit more context, and I don't need it right now, but, and if I'm the only one who wants more context, and I could just set up a meeting with you to learn more.
I'm also happy to write a summary.
Yeah, so I don't know, like, what you guys think, if that's something that's interesting to, like, learn more about, or I could just meet with Dr. Shoa to learn more, or whatever, but I felt like this chart was a good place to start, like, it gave me a framework, but I wanted, I wanted a little bit more information.
Given the current state of affairs, I would offer to just write the summary, since that's something, I think, on everyone's mind, and especially since we have the burgeoning partnership with Cove Care, it might be helpful just to better understand each individual and their role and what they offered our students.
Yeah, and given the community's interest, if it could be something, it could, for example, accompany your next report? I mean, I'm trying to think of something that could be posted on Board Docs.
Maybe a presentation at the next regarding.
I'd be happy to.
And you don't necessarily have to name staff members?
I can talk about roles and certifications.
Sure, that's what I'm getting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Just like to talk a little bit more about the heating and piping system in the gym. I know you guys enjoy that. No, in all seriousness, I just want to highlight two events that happened last night. We had our Booster Club Winner Awards Night, as well as our Spring Parent Meeting, so the end of one season and the beginning of the other. So just want to thank the Booster Club for running the event last night, and thank you to the coaches and parents who came out to support our student athletes. It's been kind of hectic with the weather, but our spring coaches are working hard, as well as our student athletes, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go back into Dr. Bowers' superintendent report, but before we do that, we will excuse the administrators. Have a great evening, and thank you. Oh, sorry, yeah, you need this. This isn't your cord, is it? Tony, is this your cord? Okay. Okay. Dr. Bowers.
I will continue to talk about the day that we had the call to action for our students on March 14th. We did have, we probably had about 100 students, middle and high school, that took part in the walkout, and I was there, Mrs. Sniffin was there, as well as a number of, a few teachers came out, Mr. Solomon was there, and it was, it was a very moving, I guess would say, a very spirit-building moment for this district, and I think it was, I think the students did an awesome job. They had some speakers that spoke, they had moments of silence, they asked for people who wanted to speak. I spoke, and, you know, I think the message that I hope that they heard is that we were very proud of them for standing up for what they believed in. And we have a lot of very civic-minded, high-energy people in our student body that want to make things better, and so that was, I would say, if I had to kind of sum up what that day meant to me, that was it. We have, we shared with the community some of the concerns and some of the red flags that came up about safety, and we tried to err on the side of caution. We also had some people that wanted to know what would be the reaction of the school if students walked out, and really, there is no reaction. What we're looking to do, and for the, there is another date set for the 20th of April, and we are sending a letter with, that will have some of our students' signatures, as well as our administrators' signatures, to the local politicians, the New York State legislators, and the congressmen in the region, inviting them in to be part of a panel and to hear some of our students speak on the 20th. And that is what we're going to do for those that showed themselves as activists and moved forward. We are going to ask them to join us in writing letters. And so the reaction of the school is to come together, to coalesce, to be a moving force that's going to hopefully bring a good message into the future, as opposed to some of the other things that these poor kids have had to contend with.
We need to switch tapes.
Okay. Action. I haven't seen that before, but that's, okay. So we are continuing on with the superintendent's report. One of the very complicated things that I'm going to give a short rendition of is where we are with snow days and what's happening, and we actually, at first blush last week, we called our ninth snow day for the year. And watching the weather forecast and looking at, we didn't have the capabilities of bringing the kids in because of the snow, but we did have our faculty come in. And so we had some curriculum development time, our faculty reported to work, and because of that, what was a snow day turned into a superintendent's conference day. So we presently have one more day available. So just so you kind of understand how it goes, and I was trying to explain to a couple of parents, and I think it's something that I should let people out in the community know because there is a question. We need to be in session 180 days a year. That's the requirement from the State Education Department for state aid. We actually have 187 days on our calendar. So in reality, those days, although we try to be in session, we want to be in session, and we normally are in session more than 180 days, we have those seven days as potential snow days. When we hit the four days of snow days, then we start giving back. So we gave back Easter Monday, which we will now be in session, and we also modified a superintendent's conference day to make it a student day on the 23rd, this coming Friday. So that gives us now the potential of nine snow days. I never experienced anything quite like this before, and when I wrote a letter to the community saying that we still had three days, potential days left, I never imagined that we would get where we are. But last week, when we had the ninth snow day, we called the teachers in, so if, and we knew that this storm was a potential, we now have one additional day. There is going to be, there will be some ripple effects, like, one of the things that parents will be notified, and we'll put this in writing and have it go out a couple of times, but generally, at the end of the year, we have half-days where the elementary school is dismissed at 11:30. So those days are available or allowable because we have additional days beyond the 180 days. Normally, as far as the regulations go, you can't use those days as student contact days for state aid purposes. The only way you can use those days for half-days or shortened days is if you keep the school in session for the required number of hours, which is five hours for the elementary and five and a half hours for the secondary schools. So we will be dismissing, the secondary schools are already out because it's Regents Week, and they're taking their exams, and the middle school kids are doing, they're moving up ceremonies and different things, different events and fun activities at that point. But instead of our schools dismissing at 11:30, they will dismiss at 1:30 or 1:45 on those days, and that will give us the full day, the full required day. We're in school longer than we, than is required by the state, but we have to be in full session for those days. There's also, when everything pans out, because we are using, we used last week as a superintendent's conference day, the day at the end of the year, which is on the 22nd of June, which was planned as a superintendent's conference day, will not be a conference day, and we will have students in session at that day. So we, all of this has to kind of trickle out, going through the quagmire of the different requirements and what's allowed and what's not allowed is what has put us to and what's not allowed is what has put us to where we are right now. And then we have to make some changes at the end of the year. But, long story short, we do have one more day. And so if we need to... Yeah. If we need to use another snow day tomorrow, that's, we are, we are going to try to bring the kids in. It looks like the snow is going to start somewhere between 7:00 and 9:00. And it's going to be light to start and then build up as the late morning and early afternoon goes on. If that forecast is still the same at 4:30 in the morning, when I get on the conference call with the rest of the superintendents, we'll come in and go home. The elementary will probably dismiss at 10:30. The middle and high school will probably dismiss at 9:30. So that's where we are, as far as snow days.
Thanks for your patience.
Yeah, it is. It's just...
At least we're not one of those unlucky schools that doesn't have a spring break.
Are you...
Let's put it that way.
Are you going to, tomorrow morning, would you, would you do a phone blast ahead of time saying there's going to be an early dismissal? Or would you just make that announce, that call once the students are already here?
Well, I did, we did send out an email around 5:30 today saying that there could be potentially an early dismissal or closing. So for parents to stay tuned. So hopefully...
So, but if you're thinking early dismissal, you're not going to call in the morning unless it's a closing?
Correct.
Okay.
And what we'll do is we will probably put on WHUD. If we know we're going to do an early dismissal, we'll put it on right away. And then when we get here, we'll make a call to all the parents saying that we'll be dismissing at 9:30 and 10:30 or 10:15, as soon as we can get the kids out. Okay, and then we have the pipe study, which you've already heard about. And the next meeting of the Howden Board of Education is the business meeting scheduled for Tuesday, April 3rd. Meeting will begin at 6:30 for the board to hold their policy review and 7 o'clock for everybody else.
So... Great. Thank you. Okay, from our audience, any additional communication from the public this time? Okay, moving on to consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Any questions? Comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda financial.
Motion, second.
Any comments? May, all those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel. May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Item number one, superintendent search. As many of you are aware, we conducted our finalist interviews last week. Thank you to the many stakeholders who were involved and participated. We really do appreciate your feedback. At this point, we are currently still in the final decision making process. Item number two, board policy review. Let's plan on doing the next 15, which is the conclusion of Section 1000.
Okay.
So we'll wrap that up on April 3rd, prior to the business meeting. So we'll begin at 6:30 again.
And just a reminder, I wasn't planning on doing it.
You're not going to be here. Yes. Also, another reminder, applications for the position of trustee to the Board of Education are available in the district office. Applications are due by Monday, April 16th, 2018, at 5:00 p.m. There are two open trustee seats that are both available for a three-year term from July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2021. Trustee Evan Schwartz will not seek reelection, and trustee Margaret Parr is undecided. Any additional communication? Okay, moving on to new business, I think, that's you?
Yeah, this is the, this is the resolution calling for the annual district meeting and the vote on the propositions and the trustee election. I'll read the resolution, and then it's a roll call vote. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the attached resolution calling for the annual district meeting and trustee election on May 15th, 2018.
May I have a motion?
Second.
Oh.
Oh.
So move, second. I'll move.
Evan, Margaret.
Please.
Excuse me. President Hammond?
Yes.
Vice President Clements?
Yes.
Trustee Daley?
Yes.
Trustee Parr?
Yes.
Trustee Schwartz?
Yes.
Okay, the resolution is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a recommendation to table this. I have not had the full opportunity, the policy review, first reading of the website privacy policy. Can we table that to next meeting?
Sure.
And Diane, I think you could feel that coming, which is why you did not speak about the Howden website in your superintendent's report, right?
Well...
It was on there. It just...
Yeah.
So maybe website is another meeting.
Okay.
Is there a second on the motion to table?
Second.
I'll second.
Thanks. Joy is ready to go on, too.
Okay, thank you all. At the, oh, right, there is, oh my gosh.
And we're going into a session.
And we're not done.
Did you take a vote? Is that...
I did not.
All in favor?
All in favor. Aye. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular individual. No action is planned to be taken during this executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're done.
Bye.